All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great. Well, we have no other additional items for tonight's agenda. I do want to draw people's attention, though, that after we're done with our public session, the Council will move into an administrative function session to discuss issues regarding legal services. And so that will be after our public meeting tonight. Looking forward on our rolling agenda, next week on Wednesday, January 29th, we will have two items in a voting session. One is a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contract for services with I Can Shine and a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2017 budget amendment number two. We have two work sessions next week, one on a board of elections update and one on a discussion of personal property tax bill for a particular city business. And then on Wednesday, February 1st, we have tentatively scheduled a follow-up on the Tree Commission City Council joint meeting and a discussion of proposed vendor for housing and economic development strategic plan. And then on Wednesday, February 8th, we have a single reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for services for the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan and tentatively scheduled the second reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2017 budget amendment number two. On Friday, February 10th, we have our first Friday Coffee. We just scheduled. It will be in Ward 6, Councilmember Schultz's ward, and we are going to hold it starting at 8:00 at the Tacoma Park Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. So please spread the word that our first morning coffee of the new year will be on February 10th at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. And that then takes us to the middle of February, Valentine's Day, which is on our rolling agenda.
There you go.
So we'll stop there. Yes. Let's see, we have one voting item this evening. It is a resolution authorizing distribution of the City of Tacoma Park Scholarship Funds for Montgomery College students. Does anyone have any comments on our voting item this evening? No? All right. Then we'll move on to general public comments. I had a request from a few people to speak tonight, and we'll first start with an update on, and I think we also received a handout. This is, if folks want to, on the council, look at this. It's in our urban tree canopy goal for Tacoma Park, frequently asked questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Mayor. Paul Kristowski, for the record, 7708 Tacoma Avenue, and representing the Committee on the Environment tonight. I think, as you all know, we, within the past few years, have attained our Sustainable Maryland certification. This isn't something that we can rest on our laurels and say, wow, we're certified, and that's it for the rest of our lives, though. Sustainable Maryland has requirements for continual certification to make sure the city is living up to its green commitments. One of the things that Sustainable Maryland has recommended is the development of an urban tree canopy goal. Not only is this a recommendation of Sustainable Maryland, but the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Arbor Day Foundation, and the U.S. Forest Service also support this type of goal. So in order to do that, this has been one of our commitments to maintaining our Sustainable Maryland certification. The committee has developed this little fact sheet, which is called Answers to Frequently Answered Questions. The reason we did it this way is because, as we were doing this, we got so many questions, so we figured this was the best way to present it. This was developed in consultation with the former arborist, with the Tree Commission, and with quite a few residents who have had input to this. But of course, this is the first time that you're really seeing it, and the general public is really seeing it. I just want to have a brief definition of what the urban tree canopy is. I think we all kind of have an intuitive feeling. We look up there, and there's a tree canopy, that green stuff in the sky. But there is a formal definition of it, and that's the layer of leaves, branches, and stems that cover the ground when viewed from above. There's a, I apologize, there's a typo in this. It says cover the group. This only got edited by about 12 people, so both have escaped that. But if you can imagine yourself as a bird flying overhead, you're looking down. This is everything that keeps you from seeing the ground that's attached to a tree or a large shrub. This is not an urban forest tree issue. The city regulates urban forest trees under its tree ordinance. The Tree Commission has authority there. This isn't the same thing necessarily as urban forest trees, and it's important to keep that distinction. The urban tree cover actually includes much smaller trees than, for example, would be regulated under the tree ordinance, encouraging those smaller trees, of course, maybe to grow up into bigger trees someday. The benefits of a tree cover are covered in this frequently asked questions, plus the other attachment, which was this paper that put together by the Tree Commission. Did this get in it?
No, I didn't see this.
This time.
But they have seen this before.
You have seen this before. It talks a lot about the benefits of trees and why we need trees and all the good things that trees can do for our community, so I won't go into that a lot tonight. Our current canopy is at about 67%. So if you're this bird that flies over Tacoma Park, about 60% of the, 67% of the area that could be occupied by leaves, branches, and stems and things is occupied by it. There's a big difference between wards, though, and I have a table that we put into this document. I think you can see that this ranges from a low of 53% in a couple of our wards up to a high of about 76% in other wards. So there's not an even distribution of tree cover in the city. A lot of people in the environmental health community are suggesting that this is a matter for environmental justice these days, and that people should have the ability to reap the benefits of tree cover regardless of where they live. We have recommended an increase of 25% for land that is not occupied by a building, street, current canopy, or water. So we're not saying, for example, large municipal buildings like this or the public schools should have tree canopy covering their buildings. This increase is only for areas that actually are plantable areas or areas where existing cover can be maintained. This is, this 25%, by the way, is based upon a technique that some other jurisdictions in Maryland have used. Annapolis had a great analysis of this, and we followed the Annapolis lead, not wanting to reinvent the wheel and not wanting to ask the council to invest money in doing this. We also have recommended some qualitative goals in here, that the tree canopy be biologically diverse. So in other words, we don't plant all of the same kind of tree. We plant some trees that fulfill the needs of a high canopy, some of a medium canopy, where, for example, birds and butterflies can live. We want trees to be resistant to climate change. We know that whatever happens, the climate is impacting our urban forests. So whatever trees are planted should be resistant to climate change. We think that this canopy goal can be attained by some new planting, by maintaining and protecting the existing plantings. So this isn't just a matter of running out, putting in a lot of new trees. This is also a matter of taking care of what we have. We believe that we should focus our planting initially on areas, those wards that are underserved with urban canopy, and then we should look at the wards with higher canopy covers as being subject to maintenance and protection rather than a lot of new planting. We've estimated that we can attain this goal in about 30 years. It's a long time to attain a goal, but it takes a long time for trees to grow. We'll need to have an implementation plan at some point, and what we have recommended here is that we have an audit of our existing tree programs. We suggest involving nonprofit groups like Casey Trees or Mark and Forest, who give aid to jurisdictions who are doing things like this at little or no cost, to help us audit our existing programs as an outside third-party auditor would do for financial topics, for example. And then to consult with the new urban forest manager about the exact plan for implementation. We don't feel that this was a detailed map for the implementation, but that involves a larger audience. Most cities enact these things by matter of resolution of their governing bodies. However, I would leave this up, of course, to the council, the city manager, and city attorney as to the best vehicle for doing this. Sustainable Maryland does require a formal acknowledgement of this, a formal adoption of the goal, in order for it to count for our Sustainable Maryland certification. They, however, do not go into the exact detail of what that formal adaptation would be. And the last thing is, we would suggest that the council at some point schedule a work session so that this can be discussed in more detail with myself and other members of the committee who have worked on it, members of other committees, the new urban forest manager, who I have heard is, hire is either happened or imminent. I'm looking at the city manager. Maybe not as imminent as I have heard.
I think so, too.
Okay, yeah. Because obviously, it would be important to involve this person. And then to give the broader public in the venue of a work session an opportunity to see all this.
Great.
So thanks very much.
Thank you. And I just want to remind folks that on our rolling agenda, we are going to come back to the follow-up with, hopefully with the Tree Commission and the City Council in a joint meeting, so this is incredibly timely.
Great. Thank you.
I think I'll hold them because we have the folks from Posna. Is that okay?
Except for he's going to leave.
Yeah, no, he's left. All right. As I know, some other folks would like to ask to speak tonight.
Hi, everybody. Hi, council, mayor, city administrators. Mary Jane Machui, Ward 2, founder, parent of special needs adults. I forgot my notes, but I gave what I was going to say. I was just going to go over what I sent to the mayor and Jesse. And basically, we really would like to have help with housing, and it would be great if there was some kind of incentive that you could give if someone wanted to convert one of their houses into a home for our children, grown children. And I, somebody, I'm not sure I pronounced her properly, Debbie Fotiatus, who works for Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, is coming to our meeting in February. And they're talking about converting 126 and 127 Lee Avenue properties to low-income and/or special needs. We haven't quite defined what special needs means, but we would like our grown children to be together. What's happening now is lots of the times they're put in apartments way over in Rockville or Gaithersburg by themselves or with hardly any supervision, and they really need, they really, most of them would like to be together, or at least not in an institution, but maybe four to five people with maybe food, supper cooked for them, something along those lines. And also, jobs is a big thing. My son is lucky enough to have a job, but he doesn't find out until the day before that he has to go to work, which really wreaks havoc to his schedule because he has a form of autism. And when you have autism, you have, can't deal with changes like that very well. It's stressful for me because I have to drive the car with him sometimes and pick him up after midnight at the subway. So it's kind of, you know, difficult. It's difficult for families and the kids themselves, of course. And the rec department would be great if we could, just the kids could go for free to their free, there was about nine or 10 free senior classes. Why can't our grown kids go there for free also and go for the trips that are free and have an aide, if necessary, go with them? And please, the very nice young man who was here earlier, Abel, he is a great teacher. He's sort of grown up here in Tacoma Park, I believe, and knows some of you, and if somehow or another we could finance and have it directly under the rec department without having to beg for grants. And also, we haven't yet gotten the grant money, by the way. I don't know what's happening. But anyways, also, some of our kids would like to have jobs where they could just do little things. We all have different capabilities, and some of them are good with people, like some of the two young people who are here now, they're good with people, and they could be good feeding people, handing out flyers, things like that. And they'd really appreciate that because they want to feel like we belong. That's the main thing. And somebody else would like to speak, too, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kaia Blalock, Sheridan Avenue, Ward 3. I'm also the parent of a special needs adult, and I'd like to focus on the subject of supported housing. While I support any action to improve our adult children's lives, I believe their future supported housing needs are most critical. And I want to commend the council on their 2017 budget as it reflects a commitment to community revitalization and maintaining affordable housing in the area. But I want to ask that you not neglect the future and present supported housing needs of our adult children. We're a group of 15 to 20 households right now, but we're continually growing, and many of us are here tonight to show support. Our ultimate dilemma as parents of special needs adults is that we age and die just like anyone else, but we leave behind special needs adults who can't care for themselves. As we age, we explore housing options for our children, and we're finding that many of those options are not available nearby. Those of us who've transitioned our children to supported housing have children, as Mary Jane mentioned, now living in Rockville, Germantown, Gaithersburg. We want to remain part of our children's lives, but having them move far away makes it hard, especially once we lose the ability to drive long distances. I also firmly believe that our children enrich the life of this community, teaching all of us continuing lessons in compassion, courage, and tolerance. And I hope, as the council explores the idea of affordable housing, you'll keep our adult children's needs in mind, and we'd be very willing to help in any way possible to increase affordable, supported housing for our special needs adults in the Tacoma Park area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? Great. Well, I just wanted, I-
If somebody wants to speak.
Okay.
This is a public comment. I don't want to-
This is a public comment, yeah.
... they have a presentation.
No, I think they're done. Mr. Barclay, if you'd like to speak.
Everybody, this is done. This could be a comment.
And what I'm going to speak about is rather timely with what our neighbor, who, I guess he left, was speaking about, which is the tree canopy and the city ordinance that requires people to be very careful about taking down trees. And as a tree hugger who used to caretake and arboretum outside of Philadelphia, I think I've said that to the city before, and just for the folks at home, the three or four at home that are watching on TV, my name's Ian Barclay. I grew up in Tacoma Park. I live on Cedar Avenue, and I'm sorry, I forgot that. But what happens is, my opinion, and I have observed this on numerous occasions, is that because people are reticent to get action done about trees that are dangerous and damaged, and they put it off because they've heard, and again, I have more than one reference for this, where the former, and I don't want to speak ill of him, he's not here to defend himself, but our former tree certifier, our arborist, would sometimes be very difficult to deal with. I appreciate him trying to save every tree, but trees do have a set life, and when they get to where they start shedding large limbs, they're dangerous, and they should not be left. And again, the encouragement of people to plant a new tree, that's all very good, and I hope that that will continue. But my neighbor didn't care for a tree that, in a dead calm, fell on my home and did some damage. And I have attended a court hearing, and I have appealed that court hearing, and I don't know what the rest of the council is aware of. I want to thank Mr. Kovar, Councilmember Kovar, because he's been extremely patient with me and tremendous giver of his time, and I just want to commend him. But I am here to implore the city to not board up my house tomorrow morning because I am very close to getting sale, and if that house is boarded up, it's going to impede sale, and it's also going to impede my wallet, because God knows what the city is going to charge for this board up process, because I don't think it was competitively bid. I realize that the city does these RFPs, but I find that to be less than a way to get the best deal. So I come to thank everybody for all their help, and I will probably be spending the last night in my home tonight. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Well, thank you all, and thank you very much to the Posna group for coming. We have reviewed your materials, and I just want to let you know that the city manager is preparing a letter back to you with more information on some things. But thank you very much. All right. Let's see. Now we'll turn to council comments. Do my colleagues have any comments this evening? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank the organizers of the Martin Luther King Celebration this past Monday. It was over 400 people attended. The great musical performances by the D.C. Labor Chorus, the young people from Piney Branch Elementary School and Tacoma Elementary School. Couple people I'd like to highlight that are part of the ongoing organizing team, Councilmember Terry Siemens and his wife Joyce, Jackie Frazier, Shawanda Oliver, Howard Cohen and his wife Diana, Gin Wafford, Jay Keller, Regina Rickhey, and Pam Larson. And a final thanks to the Tacoma Foundation that continues to give money to the celebration. Switching to another topic, tomorrow I will be in Annapolis before the Budget and Taxation Committee in the Senate testifying on MML's leaked priorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Thank you. I wasn't able to stay for very long at the Martin Luther King Day Dinner that Councilmember Smith mentioned, but I did have an opportunity earlier in the day to attend one of the cleanup projects that was organized through some of the same people that Councilmember Smith just mentioned. And I was pleased that over in Tacoma Woods, that area that's sort of between Ed Wilhelm and the middle school and backs up onto the DPW area, there were probably, I'd say, 75 people, and picking up everything from tires to trash to cigarette butts to old bed springs, and it was a really great, huge amount of junk that was picked up. So that was good. Just before tonight's meeting, I met with a group of residents who live on Philadelphia Avenue, and I've certainly commented previously about some of the concerns with State Highway Administration and Philadelphia Avenue. And I was really impressed with the work that this small group of residents had done to put together a packet, which I'm actually going to share in hard copy. I only have a couple, but I'll give one to the city manager and the mayor if she wants it, and I can send it to others, including Councilmember Smith, since I know you're going to be talking about S.H.A. matters shortly. But there's a number of interesting things that they're looking for. In particular, it's a safety concern. We've talked previously about the condition of the sidewalks, but most of these residents had small children, and there's a section of the sidewalk where there's no separate grass strip, so it's right along the side of the street, which is technically a state highway. And as I think I've mentioned previously, the stretch of the road from Piney Branch up to Montgomery College is 30 mile an hour speed limit, while the other section of it is only 20, is 30, and the other part is only 25. So I really think we should move in the direction of trying to get that. So I'm going to be sharing the material, as I mentioned, also with Safe Roadways, because I think some of the, some of the work they do intersect with them, and planning to continue pushing forward on trying to get some safer improvements made to the roadway. They have a lot of great ideas, and so we'll share those. Thanks.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Several things, principally of interest to folks in my ward, but maybe of general interest to a lot of people in the city. One of the things I want to comment on is the City Recreation Center. Before our winter break, there was a decision to go forward with issuing a letter of interest to prospective developers in reference to the Recreation Center. This is not an RFP. It's simply something that is a lesser scale than that, trying to reach out to the development community to find out if the degree and kind of interest that might be out there with regard to the future redevelopment of the rec center site for a rec center and possibly other land uses. Just because of the crush of other businesses, other projects and stuff like that, as well as the holiday, that actual letter of interest has not yet been issued, but we expect it to be done so very soon. And I don't know, how long will, do you think that period of, that'll be open for receipt of it? Things like 30 days, maybe?
Something like that. I'll have to get that information to you, though.
Yeah. Something in the neighborhood, in the realm of 30 days. That's one thing. I know I bring it up because I've received a number of inquiries, people wanting to know, well, where does it stand? And that's where it stands right now. Number two, for those who don't live on my side of the city, the Taco Bell project, the corner of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane, has actually begun construction after several times when we thought it had started, but then we realized that, gee, maybe it hadn't started. So look for that project to probably be complete in about 90 days. Given it's the dead of winter, it may take a little longer than that because of inclement weather and stuff like that. For people just tuning in, I'll repeat what Mayor Kate Stewart mentioned, is that on February 12th, a Friday, the mayor will be holding another of her wonderful coffees. What is a good adjective? Scintillating coffees this time at the rec center. All topics are on the table because they're, the topics are your topics. So people are welcome to come to that, and of course, I'll be there. Last week, and this is finally, the New Hampshire Gardens Civic Association had a very productive meeting. I think we had 30 people show up, standing room only, which stretched the capacity of the rec center, I might add. They elected new officers, a new president, a new vice president, and a new treasurer. And the police were there in force at the community's inv- And the police were there in force at the community's invitation to talk about the crime that, and disturbances that had occurred. I think it was, they probably gave us 45 minutes of their time answering questions. It was a really helpful, I think, very constructive dialogue. People were able to ask questions, and it's the sort of thing I'd like to see repeated on at least an annual basis, where they come, Captain Collington was there, Captain Friscorn, as well as the chief, our crime analyst, was able to show slides. I think it gives people the reassurance to know what the police department's doing, that they are doing their job, and to get a sense that crime isn't as bad as it's perceived. In fact, the level of crime in my ward is greatly less than it was when I first started on this job. And also, there was a nice presentation from the Department of Public Works about the pending planning process for the Glen Side Drive sidewalk, which would be about a half-mile-long project from one end of New Hampshire Gardens to the other, if it gets approved, going according to the process that we, that the city council has established. And finally, let me just mention the Martin Luther King Celebration. My compliments to you, Jarrett, and to all of the volunteers. I mean, there were a lot of volunteers there, and the food was abundant. The place was a crush of people. I think I heard, overheard conversations of people saying, how are we going to manage this next year? Because there's so many people, and everybody wants to eat at the same time. Lots of good problems to have. It was a delightful evening. I spent a long time standing behind the counter, serving food, and it was a blast. So thank you for that. It was just a great evening.
Any other council comments this evening? Okay. I have a bunch of announcements, so just bear with me for a second. I'd just like to add my thanks also for the organizers of the MLK Day, the service projects in the morning, and the dinner and celebration in the evening. All went very well, and I was glad to be part of it. Last evening, the council met in our second of two council retreats, in which we talked about our council priorities. And I want to thank the city staff and my colleagues for two very productive meetings as we move forward, thinking about our work over the next year, as we did last year. We will come back with our updated priorities document, probably sometime in early, mid-February, and affirm those priorities. And then the new ones will go up on the city website. In addition, there, as we've been discussing, there is a feasibility study that will take place for Piney Branch Elementary School. We have just received the schedule for the input. We are, I saw it already out on Twitter today, and I imagine it's on Facebook. It will, I know there will be announcements also put out by the school, and it's probably already on our website, correct? So people can look at that. There will be five opportunities for people to come and learn about the feasibility study and provide their input. All of the meetings will be held at Piney Branch Elementary School in the media center. But to make sure you have the correct date and time, please check the city website. In addition, let's see, the event that we were going to have, the discussion on Cuba and U.S. Relations that we postponed, is now rescheduled for February 5th. That is a Sunday afternoon. It is Super Bowl Sunday, I was informed recently, but I wasn't paying attention to that. But we will be at 4:00 p.m. here in the community center, and the First Secretary for the Cuban Embassy will be with us. So February 5th at 4:00 p.m. In addition, before that, on this Monday evening, at Washington Adventist University in the Science Building, number three, at 7:00 p.m. I hope folks can join myself, and I think Councilmember Smith will be there.
I'm going to try to.
She, Councilmember Smith is going to try to attend, and I hope others can attend as well. This is part of an ongoing series that the professors at the Washington Adventist University in conjunction with residents in the neighborhood and in partnership with unity in the community are putting together a series of documentaries, movies, and then discussions afterwards. The one that we will be watching on Monday evening is regarding Shirley Chisholm, who ran for president in 1972. It's about her presidential campaign, and we thought it was timely to watch that on Monday evening and discuss it. So we'll be doing that on Monday.
What time was that?
7:00 p.m. And it's at the Science Building, number three.
Thank you.
Near the actual hospital?
Near the actual hospital, yes. And last time, everybody, I want to thank Hank Prensky for putting out lots of signs, and everyone was able to find it. And then finally, before I forget, we, myself, Councilmember Smith, and the city manager, Deputy City Manager, were able to meet on Friday with representatives from Washington Adventist Hospital, the university, Montgomery College, and County Councilmember Leventhal, representatives from County Councilmember Huckers Office, and the head of Montgomery County Recreation, to further conversations as a follow-up meeting to the letter that we sent to the county executive regarding a feasibility study at the campus of the hospital, looking into the possibility of an aquatic center. So we had conversations about how we can all partner together and look at the future of the campus, and continue those conversations. And I think that is it for me for tonight. Does the city manager have?
Oh, there is a legislative update under.
Oh, yes. Do we have a legislative update this week yet?
No. I mean, we do, but I've been worrying about my testimony tomorrow, so.
You know where the priorities are.
Yes.
I told you we'd get it.
All right. We'll start them next week.
When you mentioned the Shirley Chisholm movie, I still have my Shirley Chisholm buttons.
Really?
Yeah. The Chisholm, take the Chisholm trail.
Oh, I may have to borrow those for Monday night. That would be.
And the other comment is just on the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study. I met with two of the folks from the school system today, just informally to kind of get to know them a little bit better. One actually used to work for me here in the city, as planner many years ago. They will be having the information that comes through the facility meetings, facility planning meetings, posted on their website, and then we can link to it from our project page. So we'll also be able to have easy access to the information from those, from those community meetings. Wanted to note that I've gotten lots of inquiries, are we closed on Friday? We are not closed on Friday. We are open for business on Friday. However, certainly for staff, we have a little bit more flexibility, because some people may find it difficult to get to work on in the same timeframe. We will allow free parking at Tacoma Junction on both Friday and Saturday, and then we always have all-day parking available in this lot on Saturday. So for those folks who are looking at ways to get downtown, where they may need to leave their car, we do have some availability for parking. We have some follow-up from last council.
There was some discussion about potentially lessen enforcement in the neighborhood. Do we, is that something?
You know, we have really mixed feelings about that, because we also get a lot of complaints when people park in front of somebody's house, and it's there for a long time, and they shouldn't be. So at this point, our intention is to continue to enforce the parking laws. Following up from last council meeting, Councilmember Kovar asked about arrangements related to the plowing and salting. We don't have any real formal arrangements with neighboring jurisdictions about plowing. There's just kind of standard practicality, that when you've got a big truck, you usually go, and if it goes into the other jurisdictions, so you can get around back to the street, you continue to plow. However, we don't do clearing outside of our jurisdiction, just as others don't do plowing here, because you could be liable for damage that could be done. There's also quite a lot of information here about how we kind of guess how much salt and sand to put down and when. It is, I think the best description is an art form. And sometimes you need to put it down in a timely way, so stuff doesn't freeze up. Sometimes you have to wait till there's rain is over, so that it won't wash away, and sometimes you're doing catch-up job after the fact.
Through the years, I've noticed that there's a lot of excess salt and chemicals that gets dumped, probably inadvertently along the way, but I haven't seen where that's gotten any less through the years. It seems like if it's a problem, maybe we should be addressing it in some way.
We try to do training on it. A lot of it has to do with the equipment, but we do go back after every single run-through and get out shovels and clean it up. So at least by the next day, we either have folks out with shovels cleaning up any excess piles of it, or we've also been doing the street sweeper coming through to try to clean that up, because we don't want any salt to get into our, into our waterways.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as I know, we've not found a way to lessen that problem.
Two questions. Do we, who handles Sligo Creek Parkway and the state roads? Do we do that, or does the county?
The Sligo Creek Parkway, the roadway maintenance is by contract handled by Montgomery County, and then State Highway handles state highway roads.
Okay. So we got in some places, three different jurisdictions.
That's right.
Coming in very close contact.
That's right.
The other question is that, a neighbor was complaining about so much salt splattering up on his, on the planted area of his yard, and wanted to know if it was anything we can do about that. I think I know the answer to it, that it's almost impossible to control. And has there ever been any thought of putting stuff down besides salt, like brine or something like that?
Which is salt. I mean, the, we have a mixture of sand and salt. It varies. I know there's beet juice, that's an, that's an option that D.C. uses, and, you know, there's other mixes that other jurisdictions have used. So far, we've found that for us, the best combination is this mixture of sand and salt, not close to other options. And I know that it's always a topic at, like, Public Works conventions, about what combination and what equipment, because it's, you know, it's an exciting topic. It is. For those folks, it's a very exciting topic.
Just briefly on the same subject. I think it's the extent of the spray of the compound into yards.
Right.
And I've talked to Darrell about this before, and sometimes it's the adjustment of the spreader.
That's right.
And sometimes it's the speed of the trucks.
That's right. And so they, we try to do training on that. Sometimes where you see the little piles, it's where they were doing the adjustment to try to do that, but it's not a very finely tuned piece of equipment, so. Want to follow up on the Tyvek wrapping on the house on Fifth Avenue, which apparently they are putting the siding on now, so hopefully it's not so loud. Councilmember Koreshi sounded very dramatic.
Better, thank you.
And we have reported the stop sign being blocked. I've included in this, and, you know, you'll be able to send this out to your constituents' information, kind of in response on the Tacoma Junction, Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee. So I think the key point here is that, there was an email that was sent out that got copied around to many people, saying that this was a, and a group that was being controlled by the developer. This actually was a requested group, requested by the developer as part of its commitment to working with the community and figuring out the best way for the community to attend meetings, directed by a resolution of council. The process is following that resolution's requirements and goals. It's an advisory, the committee is a advisory committee to give direction to the community meetings, which is where the real work gets done, and we're looking forward to having that happen. I think that this addresses, what I've got here, addresses a number of the points that were made. In some, we feel that the process is working. The biggest issue has been that because there was the delay and the long-drawn-out discussions about the letter of intent between NDC and the co-op, the committee kept putting off having meetings, and so there's, the couple of meetings that they've had have had low turnout. I think now that we're at a different stage in the development process, we're anticipating more regular meetings and getting to the community meetings very shortly, so.
Councilmember Koreshi, can I ask a question in regards to, or not a question, a suggestion, if you aren't doing this already? Since we're talking about the committee, it may make sense to forward the email and your update to them.
I will do that.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question. Is this a format that we can put on social media?
Well, obviously, it's a little long, but.
Like a link?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have that, this gets put on to the minutes, with the minutes on the page.
Right, but can you just break up this part, so I can?
You can do that. Yeah, we'll do that. And I can send it to you, too, so. Want to just highlight the Homestretch Down Payment Assistance Program, which we're now starting to advertise and have people express some interest in. We're going to be doing a number of different marketing efforts in the coming days, and looking forward to that. I really hope that we have to come back to you and say, oh, gee, we need more money designated for this project. This is an opportunity for people to get $10,000 in down payment assistance for a new, for a first-time home purchase, and that's a very exciting possibility. I also have some information on the Montgomery County Bicycle Master Planning Process that's underway, and that the Safe Roadways Committee is involved in, and you'll see some information on that coming through. The only other thing I'd like to mention, just kind of reference the letter of intent question about, letter of interest question on the rec center and whatever. I think we have eight or nine vacant positions that are being advertised. Many of them are getting close to being filled, but we have been short-staffed in a number of our departments. So between the holidays and a lot of activity, and the fact that we're doing a lot of hiring at the same time, there have been some things that took a little bit longer.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We have a set of minutes from our December 7th, November 3rd, and October 3rd meeting. Would someone like to move to adopt those minutes?
So.
Councilmember Koreshi, Councilmember Mail Second, any discussion or changes to the minutes for the city clerk? No? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Now we will move on to our presentation this evening. We're glad to welcome, and again, update on the Crossroads Farmers Market from their 2016 highlights. And I think in your packets, you have, for the first agenda item, some information, so.
Happy New Year. Thanks for having us and fitting us into the agenda for this evening. I'm Michelle Dudley, Programs Manager for Crossroads Community Food Network.
And I'm Maggie Switzer, and I'm an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer with Crossroads. And if you're not familiar with AmeriCorps, it's like the domestic version of the Peace Corps, and I got placed at Crossroads as a nonprofit, and I work full-time for them. And this is the third AmeriCorps volunteer that Crossroads has been able to have, so they've had three years of AmeriCorps service in Tacoma Park, so, really good.
Thanks, Maggie. We wanted to share some season highlights and express our continued gratitude for your support of the Crossroads Farmers Market in our programming, and for the continued use of Ann Street and the location. It's our, it was our third year at the Ann Street location, and the location really suits us, so we're really grateful for that. It's an honor for my team and I to have ongoing communication and support from all of you, as well as from Public Works, the Police Department, even the Recreation Department, and the Planning Department from time to time. We just completed our 10th market season. We're doing well. We're operating consistently, and in regards to matching federal nutrition benefits, we are continuing the same kind of matching the federal nutrition benefits with coupons and food stamps, and we continue to support a core group of local producers. I did send a one-pager highlight in advance, but wanted to point out just a few specifics from, that stand out from past years, so not necessarily going along the handout that you have. But in 2016-- But in 2016, we increased our volunteer program and our volunteer hours by 50%. We had 79 market volunteers who contributed 1,257 or something to this degree hours. And that was a 50% increase. That is strengthening our market and our other programming as well. And on days that are lower attended, we have market volunteers and their friends and family are all out there at the market. So it's building customer base as well. It's exciting to engage more young people in the local food system work and in the community. 40% of our market volunteers live in the 20912 zip code. So that's an exciting statistic to share. For the third year in a row, cash sales have been increased at our market by 11% or $10,000. Market sales are in the $200,000 range for the second year in a row. And collectively, our core market staff, there are four of us who've been returning over a few years. We have 21 seasons of experience working together. And as always, we're developing new funding partnerships, which Maggie works on a lot as a Fresh Checks Development Associate. And community partnerships are always underway of being developed. And we have some resolutions I jotted down and wanted to share with you for 2017. Crossroads Farmers Markets, Farmers Market, we just run one. We hope to boost our SNAP sales, the SNAP food stamp sales at market. They were decreased this year for the first time as a result of putting more attention on increasing cash sales at the market. And so in 2017, we're going to put more effort to increase the SNAP sales and to do outreach to SNAP food stamp recipients. Second, we are going to extend our market season from a 25-week season to a 31-week season. We did a feasibility study that resulted in this step in wanting to grow our market. So that will be from May 31st through December 27th to include some holiday shopping and support our vendors in that way. It was somewhat of a disservice to close the doors before Thanksgiving for the last few years. And so we would need to get city approval to use the Ann Street location for an additional six weeks. Let's see. Third, to transition, starting in May, to comply with the plastic bag ban starting in December. So we're thinking of offering incentives to our shoppers who show up with bags for, starting in May, even though that doesn't go into an effect for farmers markets until December 1st. It is something that we will need to work up to in the 2017 season. Fourth, to improve our mentorship of our youth employees and volunteers. Our youth engagement programming is growing, which actually began for us with our participation in the City of Tacoma Park Summer Youth Employment Program in 2014. And the woman that we were placed, that was placed with Crossroads that year continues to work with us every season. So that's exciting. Let's see. Do you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. So we consider ourselves the Project of Crossroads Farmers Market, an important community partner for the city. We look forward to future invitations to work together. And we will work to continue to uphold the values and the priorities of the City of Tacoma Park. And we couldn't do this work without your support. So thank you very much. And are there any questions?
Councilmember Schmitt?
Thank you, Derek. Thank you for the report. Lot of very interesting information. Why is it that you guys decided to focus on cash rather than the SNAP transactions? What was the catalyst behind that decision?
In the past two years, we have tried to focus on that. Historically, doubling the federal nutrition benefits, we were not always in a good place to keep up with the rate that that was growing, having the $60,000 per year to provide the match. And four years ago, Crossroads Farmers Market, 50% of our, the farmer's income was that match. And the remaining was mostly federal nutrition benefits. And we wanted to create a greater sustainability for the market and to have diversity of funding coming to the farmers. And this past year, they saw more cash than they ever have before. And that was very exciting. Yes.
Good. So the number of vendors that you get in, does it always change every year? Or do you just have like a few staples that are always part of the market?
It's always in fluctuation. We started the 2016 season with 20 vendors and ended the season with 15 vendors. We don't always have the sales to support certain types of vendors, like flowers, sustainably-raised meats. They have a hard time being supported at Crossroads Market. And if the cash isn't there, it's not worth their time to drive an hour or more to be at our market, which is unfortunate because then the folks that were there the previous week, for those vendors in particular, don't always come back. So it's always this balance.
What is an example of a very successful vendor?
Jose Montoya from Montoya's Farm started selling with Crossroads in 2007 with a different farm. And he comes from Montross, Virginia. And he was with Crossroads for three years, working on behalf of another business. Took a year, we didn't see him for a year, and he came back with his own operation. And he makes in the range of $1,500 to $2,000 per week at the Crossroads Farmers Market.
And what does he sell?
Oh, fruits and vegetables.
Fruits and vegetables, okay, great. And I just want to say thank you for trying to comply with the plastic bag ban early. I do appreciate your trying to do it.
Yeah.
So thank you.
It's our pleasure. It's something that we would like to work towards. And having it in writing that we need to do that, it's going to be a huge challenge, but we're up for it.
Well, put that statement out on Twitter, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
You know, I'm one of your biggest fans. And it's been such a thrill to see, over 10 years, how you've, how the organization has dealt with challenges of all kinds since you started out with a handful of vendors on Holton Lane, where you were, you had one lane open for traffic and one lane was where the booths of the vendors were. I'm impressed by the fact, among other things, is that at the end of each day, you have, vendors have this unsold produce and fruits. Is that correct? And what that, what you do with that, I guess they have the alternative of taking it back home to their place of, you know, where they reside. But apparently, a lot of that goes to Meals on Wheels, which is based also on New Hampshire Avenue, to the extent of over almost 3,500 pounds of fresh pub produce. That's a nice synergism between two very fine organizations in our city, trying to provide quality foods to the people who need it. And that's sort of one of the side benefits that you don't, you know, what is it? The unintended consequences that you get when you have organizations looking after each other. The question I sort of have for you, how is the space in that section of Ann Street continuing to work out for you? I mean, do you anticipate, are you aiming for a larger number of vendors? Or is it a nice balance in terms of the space and the vendors right now?
I believe it's a nice balance. We're not looking to go beyond that 20 number, and we probably won't get there this season. I think I over-projected last season in bringing on new folks. The sales are not quite high enough to support more vendors. So we're committed to supporting the folks, the returning vendors that want to be with us. And yeah, the current space works well. We're grateful that the Capital City Bike Share isn't going to be built on Ann Street. Thanks for taking us into consideration on that. That would have affected two vendor spaces, which would have pushed us out further and could have been a challenge. But with that space, I feel comfortable that we are in good position for 2017.
I wonder if the new Tacoma Langley Crossroads Transit Center can be a source of customers for you since it's just 100 yards away, basically, from your location on Wednesdays. And if you could somehow or another get information to the, to that location, that there's a farmer's market within shouting distance, just a thought. I'm always happy, as you know, to offer ideas and encouragement and to help you in any way I can, and I'll continue to do that. Plus, come up there and shop. Plus, I'd like.
Thank you.
The vendors that are providing the hot food, if you've had a chance to get up there, some of those. And I realize for a lot of people in my ward, whose lifestyle and career style is such that they just can't get there on Wednesday afternoons. And we've talked about, you know, about changing the hours. But I understand that that's almost, really not something that's possible. But nevertheless, for those who don't know, the food that they serve there hot is really kind of special.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you both for being here tonight. Do you have a ballpark guess on how many, on what your sales are in relation to the farmer's market in Old Town? Like 10 to 1 or?
Well, Old Town, there are like approximately 26 vendors. And I would say an average vendor on a good day is making $1,000 more than any of our vendors at Crossroads. So I'm not that good at math.
So like three or four times more, is what it sounds like?
So much more.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, three or four times more times two because of the number of vendors.
Right. I guess I'm curious if you have, excuse me, thoughts, either tonight or any sort of written response you want to provide of whether, if you were to set a goal of increasing customers, which you may have on your own, but think about the part of the goal where the city could help. So how could, how could the city use its capacity, as we often do with other nonprofits, to help you all experiment in ways to bring in customers? I'm not trying to think of ways that you do more work, because you guys do an awful lot of work way beyond, you know, your paid hours already. But what is the added capacity the city could provide in terms of helping the word get out? I still deal with a lot of residents who don't know about your farmer's market, don't keep track of the hours. So it could be things as simple as that. But just welcome any suggestions on little things or slightly harder things that we could do to just sort of help and experiment, right? We could try something for a couple of weeks and do you guys see a difference, that kind of thing?
Thank you for that question. The first thing that comes to mind for me is like more assistance in ads, potentially in the newsletter or at bus stops throughout the City of Tacoma Park location that advertise our hours and the SNAP doubling. In terms of SNAP outreach and increasing that, some of our regular SNAP shoppers, including our neighbor Ian Barclay, have made suggestions on how we might do better outreach in, to other SNAP shoppers in the area and in particular at the transit center and at bus stops by doing word-of-mouth outreach or handing things out and having flyers and advertisements within buses or in bus stations. So we're definitely thinking about that. It's going to be hard for us to change the hours. Our vendors like the time and the day that it is. Because if we were to shift to other hours, they are dealing with traffic in a different way. If we're shifting to a different day, that competes with other markets that they attend. And there is something nice about a midweek market. So potentially helping us promote the fact that it is a midweek market and prices do tend to be lower than at the Sunday Tacoma market. And we do have a multi-farm CSA for folks that want to support Crossroads vendors who cannot come out on Wednesdays. They can apply for a subscription to a weekly box of produce that we deliver to a variety of porches in the neighborhood. And those sales go directly to our farmers. I don't know if Maggie had anything?
No.
How much is the CSA?
Last year, it was $27 per week. And we just got word that our CSA coordinator will continue. And so we'll be posting the announcement and sign-ups for that online shortly.
And the CSA share is normally tomatoes, corn, whatever's in season, squash?
Yeah, it's what's in season, what farmers are harvesting in abundance. And there are, last year, there were 40-some families in the city that participated. And about half of them were returning from the previous year. And there are some city staff members that are members or have been who can speak to it. But we are improving the CSA. The pilot was two years ago, and each year it's getting better.
As a member, as a CSA participant, it really is a nice program. And in terms of the produce that's included, some of the things I've never seen before. So I have learned lots of different and very good, you know, very good produce that I didn't know anything about. So it's a nice way to learn to cook different things. And, you know, it's like, whoa, what's in the box today?
It supports the farmers on rainy days. They know that if they show up at the market on a Wednesday and it's rainy, the folks that are contributing to the CSA are still going to make that sale. So it really helps them out.
I think, given the demographics in my ward, which is a lot different than you normally target for the, for the regular customers, the CSA makes an awful lot of sense. I would like to figure out if we can work together to figure out a better way to help people understand what it is. Because when you say the term CSA, there's, you know, no, it doesn't mean anything to anybody. And there might be some way we can figure out how to make that service a bit more understandable and generate a lot more of that. Because I think there'd be lots of people that would love to have it. And there's, I can tell you, all kinds of people moving into my neighborhood all the time that they're completely unaware. And so I just, a promotional effort of some sort would be, I'd love to be able to help you with that if you, if I could.
I think maybe if we sent a note to our newsletter editor here, Pro Motley, and suggested a profile of the market and a description of the CSA program.
Yeah, that would be a good start.
It might generate a lot of interest. And I would also say, something that my household has benefited from are the delicious recipes that Ms. Dudley has introduced to the Piney Branch Elementary School children. So I think sticking in some of those recipes in a CSA box would be an additional benefit. We need, we still eat the kale and beet salad at our house after all these years. And I just want to say thank you very much for you coming here, for what you provide for our community. It just is wonderful having you all here. And so, thank you. And we'll continue the conversation, as Councilmember Mail said, and ways that the city can assist you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We'll schedule a resolution to extend the time for, it's what, third, from 26 to 31 weeks.
Okay.
It's exciting.
Thank you for your time. And if you begin the transition to, from salt, sand mixture to beet juice, maybe you could make our way into one. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Great, all right. Now let's shift to our voting session. We have a resolution authorizing the distribution of City of Tacoma Park Scholarship Funds for Montgomery College students. You should have the resolution in your packets. We discussed this last week, what were some of the things that we wanted to have as criteria. Other things would be a preference. So let's, everyone take a moment to review that. Again, we are, we had put in our budget for $5,000. It is to go to five $1,000 scholarships. It is to go to five $1,000 scholarships for Montgomery College students. We had discussed last week the two criteria, that the students qualify for financial need as determined by the free application for student aid, and that the student resides in Tacoma Park. And in particular, that it specifies that the student does not have to be a U.S. citizen. And our two preferences were for students in the ACES program, the Achieving Collegiate Excellence and Success. And the other was for students to have a minimum GPA of 2.5. Are there any, before I ask for the stream moved, is there any questions or any clarifications?
I have a quick question. This might be totally nuanced lawyerly thinking, but the whereas clause that starts off says, it's a purpose of creating a scholarship award for college students. And then it talks about Montgomery students throughout, Montgomery college students throughout. Would we envision this as being a potential scholarship that could be awarded to a rising college freshman who's in high school, who's not yet matriculated in Montgomery College, but we could award it for tuition and fees for use at Montgomery College? Does that make sense? I'm just trying to understand that. Is this going to go to existing?
Yes, and in fact, the ACES program, the Achieving Collegiate Excellence and Success, is geared towards rising high school students.
Okay, so then that resolves my issue.
Would it be clearer if I just said for current and future college students?
I think, because I feel like some, when you read it, it's almost, it reads to me, at least, as being somebody who's an existing Montgomery College student and not somebody who's a senior who plans on going there next year and doesn't know that he or she can apply.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, great. Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, did we discuss, instead of five $1,000 scholarships, maybe looking at 10 $500 scholarships, or at least building some flexibility into the amount of the individual scholarships, so they don't necessarily need to be around number 1,000. I mean, in the hope that maybe somehow or another, we can spread the money around a little bit. Just an idea, I'm not sure there's merit to it.
I don't recall that from last week.
I don't think you discuss it. I think it's certainly possible, if that's what you want to do. The way that it's currently designed is that the $1,000 would go to five students, $500 per semester, one for the fall, one for the spring.
That's where, okay.
And I think that Brad Stewart, when he was here, agreed that that was a good way to spread it.
Okay. Councilmember Mael.
Yeah, just two comments. Suggested amendment in the whereas, the third whereas clause, where it says, though does not have to be a U.S. citizen. I guess I'd rather just repeat the word student rather than though, because it just reads strange, students reside in Tacoma Park, though does not have to be a U.S. citizen. And then the one other general comment is, I think Councilmember Schultz's comment is something I'm interested in in sort of year two, in looking at how the program goes. Because clearly, I don't believe we, as a city, have the resources to support every matriculating college student that is need eligible. There's no actual reason to support Montgomery College as opposed to University of Maryland, right? Like, if one of our young people is going to get to go somewhere and has a need, so it's, but it's proximate, it's close, and it feels like it's an appropriate way to start it. So I just think if we look at this in year two, and it turns out we have 50 applicants, and then we say, well, how could we stretch the money and still make a difference? Then you think about, well, would $500 still make a difference? And that's a way we could help 10 instead of five. But I think that conversation, but there's clearly a bound on our level of assistance at some point.
I would just like to say, I've always envisioned this program, you know, starting out in Montgomery College and then growing it to colleges and universities throughout the state of Maryland, as long as the person resides in Tacoma Park.
If I can just say, I mean, I do think $1,000 for a year at Montgomery College really can be the difference between being able to attend and not being able to attend. And any amount, obviously, is helpful at a place like University of Maryland, et cetera. But I think in terms of what actually could transform a situation of being this student can't attend and this student can, this is a good amount. And we can revisit it next year, but I think this amount is good.
Councilmember Schultz, did you have another point?
Just that when I was visiting the facility up at the Kefir Center with Provost Brad Stewart, he commented, and he's been with the college for like 30 years. He said to me, he said, I have never, it is unprecedented, in my experience, for a municipality to provide scholarships to a community college. And I'm thinking, really?
We need to talk about that.
But in other words, I mean, it seems to me such an easy thing for us to do. And you sort of have to say, well, if that's easy, why isn't everybody trying to do that in their respective communities? But apparently, it's not that common. And so what we're doing here is something that he seems to think is rather extraordinary.
I think it's a challenge for our colleagues. I'm going to be at the Maryland Mayor's Association Meeting in a few weeks. I think it's a good challenge.
Throw it down to Judd.
So I'll talk to Judd and Bridget. All right. Councilmember?
Shame.
Oh, shame. Councilmember?
Another thing I just wanted to raise. Second whereas clause talks about the needs of many students who attend Montgomery College's Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. And then the fifth whereas clause says the $5,000 will be used to provide five $1,000 scholarships to five Montgomery College students. Just to be clear about what our intentions are here, the requirements are, in that fourth whereas clause, where you reside, or I guess the third and fourth whereas clause, that you reside in Tacoma Park, you have an established need. But you could technically reside in Tacoma Park and attend Montgomery College's Gaithersburg Campus and still receive the award, correct?
Do the students take classes at all the different campuses? So it's not, yeah. Yeah, so, and there are shuttle buses that run back and forth to the campuses.
My daughter went there for a while, and she, I'm not sure if she ever went to the third campus, but she did fairly often go to Rockville as well.
Rockville. Yeah. So that begs the question, is the second whereas clause fine? Or do we want to take out any reference to the campus at issue? I mean, I know that we are trying to flag that that campus is in our community. Just, again, nuance.
I mean, personally, I like having it in there because it reinforces our need to the college here. But I don't think it restricts then students taking classes at the other campuses. Councilmember Mael.
I wanted to suggest one more whereas clause. It may not be necessary, but it's not in here right now. And the whereas clause would be near the end, and it would say, whereas the Montgomery College has agreed to communicate to scholarship winners the source of the funding or the scholarship from the city. Otherwise, there's nothing in here that says that the college tells scholarship winners that we provided the money.
Right, it just says that they tell us so that we can promote that, but...
Not to be too self-serving, but if Montgomery College just advertises it as scholarship money from them.
I think that's a good idea.
Do you want to read that again, so we have it for the record?
Yeah, so it would say, whereas the Montgomery College has agreed to communicate to scholarship winners the source of the scholarship funding, that the city is the source of the scholarship funding.
The city clerk get that?
I will say it's highly likely, based on other things I've done with them, that many of us will be invited to these ceremonies and have pictures taken with them.
And I've already received a letter from Dr. Pollard outlining a lot of this.
They're not going to let us be forgotten.
Yeah, we're going to have that celebration, so. All right. With those three different changes, would someone like to move this?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Smith moves. Councilmember Siemens. Any other further discussion or changes? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no one opposed. All right. That is it for our public meeting. The council will now move into an administrative function session. Thank you for everyone who came out this evening.